Open the order, please call the roll and establish your quorum.
Councilmember Ashby.
Here.
Councilmember Warren.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Chenier.
Here.
Councilmember Guetta.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Member Carr.
Here.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Here.
And Mr. Mayor, may I remind members of the public that they are encouraged to view meetings online on our website and to provide public comment digitally via e-comment, which is on our website with the agenda.
Very good. We have a relatively short agenda this afternoon. I'd like to begin, I guess we should begin with the pledge of allegiance, of course, even though we are all remote. Would the city manager like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Absolutely. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the record, Rick, I took my hat off for the pledge of allegiance, too. I just want you to know.
It was on, it was on film.
Yep, there you go. Hand over heart and, and head off.
So let us move right to the consent calendar. Does any member have questions or comments about the consent calendar?
I'll move to consent.
Second?
Moved in second, and I just want to make a comment regarding item one, the city auditor's proposed audit plan. I just want to thank Jorge. I know he's been working with the city manager to adjust his audit plan as reflected, to help the city through the COVID-19 crisis. And just want to note that the, that the proposed plan is a little bit different as a result, but all hands on deck. So thank you, Jorge, and we appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, before we vote, may I share the public comment that was received on the consent calendar?
Yes, please.
We only had comments on item number four, which is budgetary adjustments and supplemental agreement for the Rio del Oro project. This was delivered to council earlier today and posted to our website.
Very good.
And then I do need to take a roll call vote.
Let's take a roll call on the consent calendar, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Warren.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson. Councilmember Chenier.
Aye.
Councilmember Guetta.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Aye. All right, thank you very much to the members. We do have a couple of discussion items, beginning with item seven, the water revenue refunding bonds. Who's presenting on this?
Myself, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the city council. I am Brian Wong with the treasurer's office. The item before you is the authorization to be able to issue water refunding bonds, Series 2020. I have a quick presentation I would like to go through. Okay, just as a, as a quick recap, currently, one of the, one of the opportunities that our office has is we continue to evaluate opportunities to refinance our various debt obligations to see if we can generate some savings. One of the opportunities that has presented itself in light of, you know, extremely low interest rates is the refunding of some water revenue bonds that we issued about seven years ago. Currently, there's about 192 million in outstanding bonds. We're looking to partially redeem them with taxable bonds. And the reason why this is the case is that, at the end of 2017, Congress passed what's known as the Tax Cut and Job Act, which essentially eliminated the possibility of issuing tax exempt bonds for refunding purposes. So what we're looking to do is issue taxable bonds to refund a substantial portion of the prior 2013 bonds. The slide here really kind of depicts what the potential could be. We're looking at potential cash flow savings of about 24 and a half million dollars and overall present value savings of somewhere between seven and eight percent. One of the things I want to kind of caveat is we've seen significant volatility in interest rates and obviously the equity market over the last, you know, month, month and a half due to COVID. Just to give you a perspective of where the rates have gone, when we looked at rates as of early part of March, we're looking at cash flow savings in the neighborhood of about 42 million. So we've lost upwards of, you know, opportunity cost of about 70 or 18 million just in the last, you know, three or four weeks or so. We're continuing to evaluate the timing of this to determine whether we want to move forward. But one of the things we have set forth in our depth policy is that so long as either these two metrics here, the percentage of refunded bonds and percentage of refunding bonds is at least five percent, then we want to move forward. So before you, as part of your package, you have the consideration to authorize the resolution, which authorizes the issuance of the 2020 bonds. In there are, you know, authorizing the kind of the form of the POS, sets the manner and form by which the bonds are going to be issued, and really allows for the city treasurer to execute the various documents associated with the bonds. As a quick overview of the schedule, one of the things we're targeting is the pricing of the bond. So the pricing is when we actually identify the investors and determine the interest rates and actually actual savings that we could realize when we issue these bonds. We're still in close discussion with the underwriting team as well as our financial advisor. Currently, we're targeting the week of April 27th, which is about two weeks from now. One of, obviously, one of the things that we have to keep in mind from the city perspective is we're continuing to monitor rates. If it turns out that rates are, are moving, continue to move sideways, we may defer this a little bit until things normalize a little bit. But the current plan is to target the pricing two weeks from now to determine where the rates could be and, and to close the financing within a week or two.
I have, I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
I think Jeff Harris is up first, and then I'll get to you, Alan.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Brian, I wanted to ask you, since rates are so volatile, what's the spread of interest that makes it worth doing the refunding bonds? I noticed you had about a 1% differential in the 2013 and 2020 bonds. At what point, you know, if the interest rates get closer together, is it not worth going through the exercise?
That's a, that's a good question. Vice Mayor Harris, we're continuing to evaluate, determine whether or not, we don't, I don't have an answer for that right now. We're continuing to monitor the markets. John and I have an updated call with Goldman Sachs and our financial advisor on Thursday to get a more updated indication of where the rates are. But if interest rates continue to come down, then there, that might be a decision point for the city to make to defer this a little bit. But if, if rates normalize in terms of going back up, then, you know, that's what to evaluate, determine, you know, we want to defer it, or do we want to move forward with, with the pricing within two weeks or so.
Okay, thank you, Brian.
Alan?
Yes, Brian, you know, is this a scenario where we could do a, like a rate lock, like you might do, with an opportunity to float down, so we kind of minimize the potential risk in rates, you know, going up and therefore shrinking our savings? So a rate lock that allowed you to float for a period of time. So like, sometimes you can do like a 30, 30-day rate lock, you know, different, you know, 60-day, 90-day, and so has that scenario been, you know, been?
Sure. Councilmember Warren, that's an excellent question. One of the, one of the questions we did ask the Goldman team, Goldman Sachs team, early on in this process is kind of what you have asked. And one of the things they did mention to the city team is that it can be done, but it's not very common. And so there's a premium. So that's one of the things when we have an updated discussion on Thursday, is what that premium could be. I don't have an answer to that at this point, but we have approached the issue, and they did say that it can be done, but it's not very common, and there's going to be a premium because investors are taking, bearing the risk of where rates could be. But we'll be happy to follow with Goldman and others to determine what that's going to be.
Well, you know, I think it's important to have that information because the calculus can then be analyzed and a decision can be made. Case in point, you know, we've seen rates, you know, fluctuate, and even if you look at mortgage rates for refinances and homeowners, rates are at an all-time low, but because of the demand and now some of the other issues coming into the market, it's, it's driving like the rates back up, even though it's unjustified. And so, you know, the, the market is very fickle. I would strongly encourage to look at rate locks. I mean, not saying we do them, obviously that comes back for some analysis and decision, but to look at it, so we know at a minimum, we've capped a certain savings to the city, and we should be looking at this on every refinance situation that we have throughout the city. And I would, I would strongly encourage that to, to kind of look at this in the same fashion.
We will definitely evaluate that and in our discussion with, on, on Thursday. And one of the things that's worth mentioning is obviously in light of this COVID-19, and the reason why we've seen such interest rate volatility is, from what we've heard from the, the various underwriters as well as our financial advisor, is there's a real, the municipal market has really been closed off. And the reason for that is because investors are kind of sitting on the sideline trying to determine, you know, where, where rates are going to go, how COVID is going to impact the greater economic market. So what that means is that if investors like Fidelity and Vanguard and others sit on the sideline, then it could really impact the ability for a healthy municipal market. And so we're hoping that within the next couple of weeks or so that things would normalize. In our discussions with Goldman and others, things have picked up with some recent very, very large deals. University, the city of Phoenix priced a $400 million water deal about two weeks ago. That was very well received. Stanford Health did a very large deal. That was very well received. So our underwriters and our financial advisor are hopeful that things are starting to pick up a little steam and as we move into the pricing, hopefully in a couple of weeks or so. But Councilmember Warren will definitely have discussions about a rate lock and also the consideration for, you know, what the cost is going to be in determining the premiums, et cetera.
Councilman Carr?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Brian, along those same lines.
Larry?
Yes, can you hear me?
Can you hear?
Here you go.
I hear you.
We hear you.
Okay. Along those same lines that Councilmember Warren was asking you about, are we nimble enough to be able to take advantage of the wild fluctuations in rates? Is there any additional authority that the treasurer's office would need in order to capture the really favorable market when it appears?
Councilmember Carr, so after, if council approves both this item, which is, you know, the issuance of water bonds and the subsequent item, which is wastewater bonds, the answer is no. We had a call this morning with a broader team where we feel that we are nimble enough to move quickly. Our plan is to, to oppose the POS, which is the primary offering document to investors later this week. And if, if necessary, we could price as early as next week if, if things are favorable. One of the things that in our discussions with Goldman and the others is for the city team to be very, very flexible. And after the, after the authorization today, I think we had that flexibility to, to move as quickly as need be to price and, and to close the bonds. So I, to answer your question, I think we are nimble enough to move after, after today.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Is there a motion on the item?
I'll move the item.
Second?
That was Eric and then Jeff. Okay, let's call the roll on the item, please.
Councilmember Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Warren.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Chenier.
Aye.
Councilmember Guetta.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Aye. All right, thank you. That passes. We have a similar item here on the wastewater revenue bond. Is it the same analysis, Brian?
Correct. That's exactly it, Mayor. So Mayor and members of the council, the next item is really the consideration to be able to issue refunding of bonds for the wastewater program.
Can't hear you, Brian.
Oh, sorry, I'm pulling up the presentation right now.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so similar to the water bonds that we just discussed, in 2013, we also issued the wastewater bonds. So as part of our, kind of our ongoing efforts to evaluate refunding candidates, it was determined several months ago that the 2013 wastewater bonds are also a potential suitable candidate to refund as well. So this slide just shows that roughly 28 million that are outstanding were planned to refund a majority of it, roughly about 25 million or so. On the next slide, the details related to the potential savings is starkly different in, partly because of the size of the differences between the water and wastewater bonds, but also because of the overall credit feature. So here, we're looking at about 2.6 million here in cash flow savings between FY '21 and fiscal year '20 and '42. And so between these two numbers, we're right there on the cusp of about the 5% kind of benchmark that we're, that's in our depth policy to move forward. So this one might be on the cusp of whether or not we want to move forward, or if we want it delayed or not. We're actively evaluating this to determine this. Just to give you a perspective, when we were looking at this one about a month ago, early part of March, the savings here, instead of being 5.5%, were upwards of 10, 11, 12%. So similar to on the water side, the COVID-19 has had a significant impact on the potential results if we were to have issued the wastewater bonds and priced about a month or so ago. In terms of the resolution, similar to the water, asking for approval to approve the resolution, which among other things, sets the, the POS and the various kind of parameters that we can move forward with in terms of pricing the wastewater bonds. For key dates, we're, we're running on a parallel track. We're looking to see if we can price the week of 27th. Again, if the numbers don't normalize and if there's still, if they're below the 5% threshold, then we will defer that until things pick up a little bit. One of the, one of the big points that we want to make is that because we're not pressed for time to finance any kind of new improvements, we have the time on our side to wait for rates to normalize a little bit to, to see if we can generate more, more cash flow savings for either the water or in this case, the wastewater fund. With that, that concludes my remarks. I'd be happy to ask, answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, Alan Warren. Alan's got another question.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Hey, Brian, what, are there prepayment penalties on any of these bond refinances?
For these? No. So, so normally, they would, so normally they would have a tenure apart call. And so, because when Congress approved the tax law change at the end of 2017, we're issuing taxable ones. So the, the short answer is no, there's no penalty. We're issuing taxable ones to take out the tax exempt bonds.
Okay. But then why are we, you know, in this interest rate environment, why are we waiting so long to at least come to council and get authority to make these decisions? So you don't, we don't have to schedule and go through all this stuff before, you know, you know where we can go with the, with the, with the interest rate environment fluctuating as much as it is. Time is up.
Councilmember Warren, so one of the nuances. So one of the nuances, when we obtain authorization to issue the bonds, we need to bring the substantially final form of the documents, including the preliminary official statement. So that's similar to kind of the prospectus for, you know, common stock. So in order for bond counsel and disclosure counsel and others to be able to have that, we need to have the structure and overall kind of legal documents, including their preliminary official statement in substantially final form. So that's kind of the, to answer your question, we don't have the documents in place to be able to do that until we kind of work through the financing team with bond counsel and all the other members of the financing team to work on that over the course of a few months.
I wonder if there's anything the council can do, you know, to short, shorten this cycle of, of us being able to actually take action. May, maybe that's something for the city manager and, and, and John Colville and, and the city attorney to, to look at this. Because if we're in a fast-moving interest rate environment, we need to be nimble because I think we know that there are going to be some impacts to the, to revenue because of the virus. And so, as opposed to being on the defensive all the time, we should, I think, look more aggressively at ways we can take advantage of what's going on as well, instead of responding to the trauma that it's causing. And this interest rate environment is, I think, an example of that. That's going to be fluctuating up and down, so maybe there's some process we can go through to give the authority to the city manager and/or John, so that when we see these significant savings, I mean, the, the first illustration, you know, I mean, we've lost an opportunity to save 20 million bucks or more, and that's a lot of money. And during this time, I think we need to pay particular attention to those kind of opportunities.
So Councilmember Warren, maybe it's an opportunity for John and I to sit down with the city attorney and revisit, similar to my signing authority, we could revisit the treasurer's authority to make some of these changes you're talking about.
Sure. Yeah, thank you.
Councilman Warren, this is John. What, can I, just one input? We recognized this refunding opportunity back in October, November of last year. We realized that there was significant savings. Just the process and the decision process between us and DOU was, was delayed, so.
Yeah, well, anything, anything we can do, John, ideas that you guys have, or, you know, I think they should all be put on the table because now is not the time to just kind of sit back. I mean, this stuff is, is, things are changing every day.
Oh, I know. And in, in environment world, investment world, I've taken advantage of all these sell-offs because I can do it like that.
Yeah.
In the public finance world, things take a little bit longer. So I completely understand. Anything we can do to shorten that timeline would be advantageous.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else?
I'd move the item.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Okay, let's call the roll on the item, please.
Councilmember Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Warren.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Chenier.
Aye.
Councilmember Guetta.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Aye. Okay, thank you. It's good work. Appreciate it, city treasurer's office.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one item. Howard, are we going to wait till next week on a review of the emergency declaration?
No, this is just a very quick update. So given, Mayor Council, given the county's recent extension of their public health order through May 1st, I recommend that the city council continue the city's emergency declaration through that same time period.
I don't think that's, shouldn't be controversial here.
It's just based on city code. We need to bring this back to the council.
I'll move the item.
Okay, let's call the roll on the item, please.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Oh, I thought I removed the second.
It was moved by Councilmember Chenier. Do I have a second?
Jennings.
Second.
Go ahead.
It seems like we have a unanimous second. Roll call. Councilmember Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Warren.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
You muted, Jeff.
Yeah, aye.
Councilmember Hanson. Councilmember Chenier.
Aye.
Councilmember Guetta.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. I'm sure to be revisited again. Probably one, one more time. Okay, are there council ideas? Or comments on items not on the agenda?
Yes, Mayor.
Go ahead.
And I have a, I have a close in, in memory of, actually, I have two of them.
Okay. Let's go. Steve Hanson, you were first. Go ahead.
Yeah, I know there's a lot of difficult news in the world, but I wanted to share a piece of positive news that came out just before we started this meeting this past weekend. Our very beloved member of Congress, Doris Matsui, got married to Roger Sant and did it virtually. But I thought that was wonderful news, and I just wanted to share it and congratulate the congresswoman and her new husband on their urge.
Thank you, Steve. That's great. We all join in that. Congratulations. Really beautiful. Larry?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First of all, I just want to inform the council members that there were rumors floating around the African-American community that blacks could not catch the coronavirus. And Councilmember Warren and Jennings and I have been reaching out not only to our regular sources of information, the people who receive our newsletters and notices and the like, but going even beyond that, reaching out to the DJs who play music that appeals to especially our young people, and even reaching out to the advanced peace group to get the word out that, yes, indeed, not only can blacks catch the coronavirus, they're catching it at a greater, at a rate greater than the rest of the community. So I want to thank Councilmember Warren for initiating that action, for bringing Rick and I into it. And we are distributing masks to some of our nonprofits and encourage them to encourage our young people to be cognizant of this virus, knowing that even if they don't show symptoms, they can bring that virus home to their mothers and grandmothers and grandfathers, and they could potentially die from it. So I just wanted the council members to know that we are pursuing that action. The, the second thing, we instituted a, and I supported the Small Business Emergency Economic Relief Program. Council put in a million dollars to help small businesses weather their way through the crisis. And it's a loan program, and eventually those loans are going to be paid back. I don't expect it's going to be overnight, but eventually they will. And when you look at who received those loans, they mainly went to the sophisticated property and business owners in Midtown and Downtown, and very little of it reached out into our communities. And when I say our communities, I mean the typically underserved communities in Sacramento. So what I would ask the city manager to do is develop a loan program for small businesses in the underserved and underrepresented communities, utilizing the repayments from the City Small Business Emergency Economic Relief Program. Return to council for a discussion and potential approval of such a proposal. So as the money is paid back from the loan, from the million dollars that we have already granted, develop a program that would target small businesses in those underrepresented areas. And Mr. Cityman, Howard, I can send you a copy of these of exactly what I'm asking for, but essentially that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Good suggestion, important suggestion. Okay, who else was up? I'm sorry. Alan, did you have a comment?
Mine is, well, I just want to second.
Be adjourned. Is there anybody else, any other members?
Can you hear me, Mayor?
I do. I was just, why don't you go ahead? Why don't you go do the, do the adjourn? Go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to.
Mr. Mayor, before we do an adjournment in memory, can I share the public comments that I've received for matters not on the agenda?
That's fine. Okay, let, let's do that first. Go ahead, Mindy.
So I received two comments for matters not on the agenda. These were received prior to the start of the council meeting and have been distributed to the city council and have been uploaded to our website.
Okay. Thank you very much. Let's end the meeting then with an adjournment.
Mayor, I'm sorry, just in response to one of the public commenters. I have noticed particular on the city's portion of the bike trail by Blue Diamond, a significant amount of trash and refuse that is gathering. So I would ask the city manager, I meant to call Jeff about it yesterday when I saw it, but to work with solid waste to provide some receptacles or to clean up some of the refuse that's there that's generated by those camps.
Okay, good. Thank you. Alan? Alan?
Yeah, two, two memories in, in, in adjournment of, of two very special people. One was James Sweeney. And I don't think it was widely announced, but James Sweeney was more recently a lobbyist. And he's a former councilman in Berkeley and, and former president of the NAACP. Very striking man, tall, about six, seven. But about, actually about thirty days ago, he went in the hospital and it was kind of at the early stages of the coronavirus. I've not heard if it was the coronavirus or not. But some of you may know Mr. Sweeney. He was in his seventies. The art that you see in my office, or not all of it, but most of it, and in the hallway around my office when I was first elected, he donated that and, and just wanted to have, you know, a presence of his art, you know, in the space. And so he was a friend of mine and just a wonderful person. A lot of people respecting him. Highly regarded at the Capitol, and he passed away about thirty days ago. And then just on Saturday, no, Sunday, yesterday, Mama Perez was ninety five years old. She was in Del Paso Heights. I had known her and her family since the time I was a child. And some of you probably know Mina Perez and Adrian, and it was Mina's mother. She lived in the same house that they, that, that Mina had grown up in, and she had a nice garden there and had invited me over for a nice garden luncheon one day, you know, maybe ten years ago. And it made me feel like I did when I was a kid going over there, and they had all fresh vegetables and fruit and, and she made pozole. And, and we had a nice chance to talk and, and had come to realize that a, a number of politicians had come there and she had pictures of all of them on the wall. And she told me, she said, Alan, I'm putting your picture here and you're going to win and be our city councilman. And that was before I was even elected. And so very special person, special children, lifelong commitment to North Sacramento and District Two, so she's going to be missed.
Thank you for both of those, Alan, two special people. I knew Mr. Sweeney as well. That's very sad, very sad to hear.
Yeah.
Yeah. Mayor, if I could also add, I, I also appreciated Mr. Sweeney. And I got to know him when I first started in the legislature. And I saw him recently, right before the shutdown. And always, always just a very kind, just a welcoming person to everyone. So thank you, thank you, Alan, for bringing him.
You're welcome, Eric. Yep.
Jay Chenier and I remember Mr. Sweeney from our days on the school board, where he was quite an advocate for young people and was always there to present the case of what we could do for our young people. So that's how I'll remember him.
And, and I got to work with him when he was at the NAACP State Conference. And he's just a remarkable man.
All right, everybody. So we meet next week again?
If you want to.
That is correct. We have a meeting on Tuesday.
Hey, I miss you guys. I just want you to know I miss all of you guys.
Miss all of you too.
Yeah.
All you. But we got a lot of important work coming up, including beginning to talk about the city budget and federal stimulus and a lot of, a lot of key decisions to make in, in the weeks ahead. So be in touch with everybody.
Very good.
We're adjourned.